Hello, I am Potato Cat. Welcome to my channel. Today, we're playing XOXO Droplets. I know you're probably going, "Huh, again." One day, I'll surprise you and I'll just randomly say "droplets," "oxoX," and then you will be shocked. Previously, we uh... I think, I believe we went on our last date with Nate, like, we can't, not Nate Everett, and now, we can't go out on dates with him anymore. And now, we're having a conversation with Missy. And she thinks we're a sucky person in our group. We're in the sucky half, I guess. That's pretty much where we left off. Alright, let's continue. But that's all it takes, huh? One good-looking part and they're officially not lame? "I like his hair too. Don't you feel the same way?" "No, the whole package has to work for me, or he's not gonna cut it."
Yeah!
"I can see that." "Of course you can. It makes sense, unlike what you're doing." "It's not bad for me." Uh-huh. "One more thing, do you really think I'm lame?"
No, it was a joke.
Mm-hmm, sure. Digger, you need to learn when to let a joke die.
Also! Ha-ha!
Ha. But she left one hot out. Tuesday? Oh, I think it's happening. "You're late. Wasn't aware that we planned on meeting up?" "So sorry, I'm in demand. There's only so much I can do." Whatever. Tell me, what does your little group of popular friends think of us as a couple anyways? You're gonna have to be more specific than that. I'm still not happy I didn't get to be there when you first broke the news to them. They sort of thought the same thing I did when you asked. That it was a horrible idea.
Yeah.
Oh, thrilling. And did you make them change their minds about it? Yeah, no.
You big baby.
Of course. I guess I should've expected more from you. Oh, shouldn't have expected more from you. Hey, I'm already sacrificing a lot for this. Uh-huh, like what?
Obviously.
Like, having to make people mad cuz I'm officially taken and they were interested. And whenever you do something stupid, I'm gonna have to stand up for you. Right, back at you, except twice as much. You're right, and who cares what they think about us anyways? He's right about that. You care about what your friends think. Since when did it not matter?
Duh!
Uh, since forever? No, really though? People care about what I think, not the other way around.
Yay!
You care more about me than them? Yay! Though, expected.
I care more, only cuz I don't care about their opinions at all.
That's fair. Don't embarrass yourself by making a big deal out of nothing. Okay, I'm not upset anymore. Thanks handsome. Fuck, you're annoying. Oh. Our relationship is so heartwarming. Whoa, how late is it? Only plan to nap for just a little bit, honest? School is over for the date and Brian looks to be heading back to the dorm. Uh, what are we at with our groups? I do not remember. I guess getting a nerd reputation up isn't so bad. Okay, so I guess we'll wave to him or something. Everett, so of course we're gonna say hi. Okay. I don't think we can go out. There's like no more places, is there? Yeah, cuz we did all these, okay? He won't go here. Or there. Yeah, so we did all the things he's willing to do. So I don't know what to do about that. Uh, maybe something will unlock once like he's at all, when he's completely full? Nah, I changed my mind. Uh, well, we can do artists. Okay. Got 10 days left, so we don't need to go out yet. I guess we can just text him. Yeah, what happens when he maxes out? Do we get a special thing? Uh, Jason. Everett, Nate, Shiloh. We'll start a conversation with Everett. Ooh, Gabe. Accept that. Okay, so... Now, what is he at? Do I still have? I got 3 days left. I'll just kind of work. And do some more work. That's a lot of stuff happening there. Okay. Yeah? Uh... This Missy half horny? Looks like we could fill these out. Oh, Pran and Nate?
Hi!
What's going on here? Uh, hello? Nate, Pran?
Seriously?
Alright, I can understand you two getting in a situation where you wanna ignore each other, but what did I do?
No comment.
I have nothing to say to anyone right now. Um, you gonna tell me what happened?
Boo!
Okay, thrilling. Oh, poor misguided Bay. It doesn't matter how many times you tell that joke, it's not gonna be funny. What was the joke? Oh, hi Shiloh.
You look so pretty!
Thank you? Matilda! Hi, you look great today!
True!
It's true. Yeah, though, you look beautiful every day. Also true.
I hope that's okay?
I hope it's not annoying having me pointed out so much. I'll survive. I'm glad. I don't know what I'd do without you.
Mm-hmm.
I know, I have to take such good care of myself for the sake of others. You're so generous! As always, I know, man. I never get tired of this. And I never get tired of seeing it! How wonderful! Pran, so of course we can't say anything to him cuz he's Pran. Okay. I guess we'll go out? So I'll go here, buy me some energy drinks, I'll buy 2. Yep, and I'll leave again, and then I'll go here and, okay? I'm gonna change my luck, like, I'm gonna talk to you, but I gotta change my luck. I'll buy 2 of these, 2 of these, which is why 2 of everything. It's not like I don't have the money. Hmm, guys? Everett's... Hey? I did give myself the energy drink trick, I didn't imagine that. Just the one equipped. Okay, and now I'll go out again to talk to him.
Heya!
Heya Romeo.
My warmest greetings, greetings, greetings. Great, Breen. My warmest greetings, Madame Matilda.
Themed to you?
Thank you kindly.
I hope this fine day has treated you well.
Yeah, sure, it's been fine.
Marvelous!
Uh, what about you?
It has been a truly fulfilling day. I have been able to lend my services to many individuals.
Is that so?
Isn't that nice? Must be tough going to school and having a real job. I relish in having a day of tasks to complete.
It sounds like a pain to me. There are way better things to do than work at a job or do school stuff.
A true point. I am certain a shape, a sharp young lady like yourself has many important engagements.
That is completely right. Looks like you can be sharp sometimes too, but that wasn't sharp enough to make up for the fact that you like having your time filled with work and junk. So overall, you still seem pretty dumb.
It is understandable. 'Tis not a life pleasing to everyone.
Okay.
Well, at least you didn't say "I'll understand when I'm older."
Wisdom is only limited to years if you allow it. All are free to learn if they so choose.
Well, it's their 1 month old.
Haha, you are a clever one indeed.
Well, thank you. Normally, I'll take any compliment, but really, anyone could have pointed that out.
A 1 month old would not have been able to.
Ha-ha!
Ha. You know, if a 1 month old could talk, they probably would've been able to do it.
Fascinating. Do you really believe so?
No, I was just making fun of your point again.
Of course.
Wow!
So you're okay with me bashing on your little pearl of wisdom about wisdom?
It was not a perfect statement.
That's no fun.
My apologies.
I must say, I have a great deal of fun speaking with you.
Well, yeah, everyone likes talking to me. So I'm sure you'll be glad to know that I'll probably come and talk to you again sometime.
That is truly wonderful news.
See you.
Uh-huh, okay, thanks for the chat. I'll see you around Romeo.
A good day to you, Madame Matilda. Farewell.
How enlightening. Okay. Yep. We gotta get our nerds up. Other scarification and nerds.
Hi!
Wha-what? Shiloh, why are you calling me? Hi, hey, Shiloh. What are you gonna do for Lynn's birthday today? You remember too? Of course, I never forget something important like that, so do you have anything prepared? I got him a gift! Good for you. I didn't. We should get the gang together. Like for a meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it'll be great. But Lynn said he didn't want the meeting for his birthday. Neither did the other 5 people in this group. Besides, I'm sure he's just being shy.
Okay!
If that's what you wanna do, you can count on me. What do you have in mind?
Excellence.
Well, Lynn said he sort of has the tradition of going out to eat on his birthday, so I think that's what we should do. Cool, should it be at the cafeteria? No way, we have to take him somewhere special. Let's go to Rio. Sounds good to me!
Alright!
Alright, all that's left is to get everyone there. That might be a problem. Nah, it'll be easy. I'll just pretend like I'm asking them to hang out with me one-on-one. They'll be there. But they're busy. They're not busy for me, Shiloh, and me. Don't you know about me? I'm the meanest me. Like I said, they'll be there. I believe it. What should I do? You're gonna have to convince Lynn to show up. I don't have his number, and even if I did, he'd... Wait, wait, we don't have his number? Then how does he tell us how to, how does he text us? Does he have a special school phone that he only uses at school or something? Whatever. I don't have his number, and even if I did, he'd probably be more comfortable having you ask him to go somewhere than me. Got it. I'll make sure he comes. Thanks for being useful, Shiloh.
No problem!
See you there! Later! Oh, my minion, you're so useful to me. Okay, let's call up some guys. Yeah?
Hi!
Hi Everett, it's Matilda. Wanna get something to eat with me?
Yeah!
You wanna go today, like, right now? I do. I can't wait another day to see you. You're lucky I'm hungry. Where are we going? Rio. What's that? It's a restaurant by the coast. How could you not know? You lived here for ages.
Ha!
Right, that place I always forget to exist. You can't blame me, it seriously blends into the background. Haven't we like gone out on dates and said, "Meet in front of Rio," he's shown up? Then I bet you haven't been there recently. We should definitely go. Alright, I'll do it today. But don't make me, don't make a habit out of this. I can't always make time, you know?
Yay!
Woo! Wait for me inside the place. Why? Why not? See you there, bye! Bye? I really hope Everett doesn't tell Nate about this.
Yeah?
I mean, he probably will. And their roommates. So, I assume if Everett leaves, Nate will be like, "Where are you going?" And he'll like, "Oh, to Rio." What is it? Heya Nate, it's Matilda. Let's go to eat together. Right now? Yep!
Ha!
At Rio?
Haha!
Good! Everett told you. See, I knew that would happen. Why are you asking both of us out on the same day? Cuz it's not a date, I just wanted to hang out with the 2 of you. You didn't seem to think that's what your invite was about. Well, that's the way I meant it. Gosh, you're so rude. I mean, seriously, just because a girl likes to go out on dates, that means she can't have a single day when she just wants to hang out? This is for Lynn's birthday, isn't it? Snap, I forgot you knew.
This is absurd.
I'm the one who told you. Not to mention, we talked about it during a meeting. Everyone knows. Oh yeah! I'm not coming. Come on Nate! Don't be the world's biggest spoilsport. I'm sure everyone else forgot.
I have things to do.
But I won't tell anyone about your stupid plan.
Weak!
Not good enough. Are you kidding me? That's 100% more than you deserve. I deserve everything that I want, and I want you to be there.
No.
Too bad. Do you really want to be known as the guy who ruined Lynn's birthday? That's not what I'd be.
Bye!
That's exactly what you'd be, so be there. Bye. But... Next! Bay!
Hello!
Hello Bay. Sup Bay, it's Matilda. I was feeling hungry and wanted to see you. So, I thought I'd kill 2 birds by getting something to eat with you. How flattering. Do you mean right now?
Uh-huh.
Yep, I wanna take you to the restaurant, Rio. That's rather last minute, Twinkle. Why does it have to be today? Cuz tomorrow is too far away. Uh-huh, is that really it? Mm-hmm, please?
Well...
I suppose I can manage this one time. Yay! I'll see you soon and meet me inside the place. Fine, goodbye sweetie. Bye! 3 down, 2 to go. Uh, what?
Heya!
Hey there Jeremy, it's Matilda. How about you and I go get something to eat right now?
Nope.
Yes. Why does it have to be right now?
Oh brother!
I'm getting sick of hearing that. Um... Has to be now, because there's no point in putting things off. Being prepared is a point. Why do you need, what do you need to prepare for? Being hungry. I'm not hungry now. Yes, you are.
Hmm.
Meet me inside the restaurant. See you soon! Whatever. Okay, this one might be, this one might need a different approach.
What? Hi!
Hi Pran, it's Matilda. Are you hungry? No. Close enough. Let's get something to eat together. No. Yes.
No.
No. But, it'll be great. We're gonna go to Rio. I don't care. I'm not going anywhere today. Would you go tomorrow? I'd think about it. Cool, cool. It's set. I'll see you there tomorrow, bye! Wha- Heya Pran! What is it now? I'm super sorry, but something came up, so I have to reschedule our meetup at Rio to today.
Alright!
Oh, see you there today and meet me inside the restaurant. Alright. And done! This is gonna work out so well! Oh my goodness. Hey Shiloh, did you complete your part of the mission? Yep! I wouldn't let you down. Has anyone shown up yet? I don't think so.
Groovy.
Good, now we just have to hope they don't run into each other on the way here. You should hide. Gotcha!
Hey!
Hi Everett! Hello Everett, go inside please. Aren't you coming? I will in just a sec. Alright? Not suspicious at all? So, how are things working? And he still shows up. Perfect! You better not blow it. You aren't even gonna thank me for coming to this farce? Right, thanks man. You're a treasure.
Sorry I asked.
Exactly. Nate, what are you doing here? Why'd you come back out? Cuz I saw Nate?
Who cares?
Why do you care? For- forget about it Everett, let's go inside. They'll probably be here soon. What?
Oh!
Oh, you 2 decided to come here today too? That seems like an odd coincidence.
Is this some kind of trick?
Fuck, is this some kind of trick? Huh, you cut on faster than I had anticipated? Ah-ha, I knew something was, I knew something strange was going on. Then why'd you come? Because I was hoping you would show up. I need to stop asking you people things. Jeremy and Pran, you made it!
We shouldn't have come.
Yeah, but you did! You seriously had to invite everyone? Nah nah, don't be angry. It, it'll just make this more embarrassing for you. Aw, that slept in Shiloh. You figured he would've been the first to show?
I was!
Unlike you, Matilda trusted me not to tell me what was going on.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, that's not something to be proud of. And actually, there's someone else missing. Who? Lynn! Why him? Was this his idea? Nope!
Ah!
It was her idea. She wanted us to get together for his birthday. You knew? It was obvious. And you came anyways. How precious of you, starfish. Though, I must say, you could've simply been honest with us, sugar plum.
Uh-huh.
And you really would've shown.
Of course!
No, you wouldn't have. This is lame. Hey, think of it this way. Lynn didn't want a birthday meeting, just like you, and now he's being forced to have one. Not good enough.
Ah!
Ah, what are you doing here? We were brought here under false pretenses. Hey Ellen, I wanted us to have a meeting for your birthday. You shouldn't have. Well, it's too late for that. Everyone's already here, so let's celebrate. Uh, we can still just leave. Have you no conscience? Yes.
Scum!
No, no. It's the thought that counts. Aww! At le- see, I had this sincere awe, now she's awing. Aww, at least stay long enough for Lynn to open his present.
Seriously?
You got him a present? No, Shiloh did. Of course. You did bring that, right Shiloh? There's no point in him giving a gift if he can't do it in front of others. So, I'm gonna guess he has it. Hey, I got this present before I knew we were gonna be do- getting together. Do you have it or not? I do! Great, open it Lynn!
Thank you!
It's a bubble bath set. I love it.
No problem!
It's nothing! Happy birthday Lynn, bye! Thank you Everett, have a nice day! Happy birthday. Thank you Nate, take care. Happy birthday muffin! Thank you Bay, have a good trip back. Um, happy birthday. Thank you Jeremy, don't work too hard. Happy birthday. Thank you Pran, be safe. Ha! Man, why didn't I see that coming? Please, don't look so down. I appreciate what you wanted to do.
You're the best!
Yeah Matilda, you're so thoughtful! I know I am. I'm the only one.
Well...
Well, since someone has food poisoning here, I should be going. Huh, okay, happy birthday Lynn! Thank you Shiloh, take it easy. Happy birthday pal! Thank you Matilda. It means a lot. Um, since we're here anyways, do you still wanna get something? Only if you're buying. No problem! Okay, so we had a date with Shiloh. Oh, hi Pran! Matilda, you dropped an eraser.
Thanks!
Oh, thanks Pran, I didn't even notice. I know. Yeah, so are you gonna give it to me?
No.
Okay, wow! Okay, I mean, he just let us know, that's good enough. If you wanted to steal my eraser, why even bring it up? Because you should know. Well, thanks. I'm so glad I've been in- Well, thanks, I'm so glad I've been informed of how much of a nut you are. Well, we'll end this episode here. It has been thirty minutes. Uh, we'll see what Pran says to us in the next episode. I am Tato Cat. If you have an already liked, comment, subscribe. Have a wonderful morning, evening, afternoon.